All right, well, we're just returning from executive session. But before we get into the rest of our agenda, I'm just, we're in the lower level of the library. We're on Zoom currently. We're being live streamed and recorded for future YouTube posting. We are a full member board. We have three in person right now. Member Whitman is on her way, but she's on Zoom right now. And member Sekman will be joining on Zoom as well for tonight. And before we move into everything else, if we could just stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have minutes Treasury Warrant Payroll. So we've got Treasury Warrant 26-12 and 26-PW-12. Is there anything out of the ordinary for?
The only thing that you can see is the first year lease payment for the Streetsweeper.
Okay.
That was approved at town meeting. Leasing financing has been secured. We expect the equipment to be delivered before the first of the year.
Okay, great. All right, so I will entertain a motion to approve Treasury Warrant 26-12 and 26-PW-12. Motion, is there a second? Thank you, Paul. Is there any discussion? All right, roll call. Alex.
Matt and I.
Leah.
Whitman.
Sekman.
Thank you, Ledger, I. We have a couple sets of meeting minutes. We've got, let's see, we have November 20th, which is the meeting we had just before special town meeting. These minutes were provided by Leah as clerk. Any questions, comments? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve November 20th, 2025, as presented.
So moved.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? Roll call. Alex.
That's.
Oh, you weren't there yet. Alex abstains. Go ahead, Paul.
Whitman.
All right. One set approved. Thank you, Leah, for writing those up. All right.
You're welcome.
November 24th, which was a regular select board meeting. So if there's, we have two sets for November 24th. We'll do the regular meeting minutes for November 24th. If there's no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for November 20, 24th, as presented.
So moved.
Got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion, questions, concerns?
No, not for me.
Alex.
All right. Matt and I.
Sekman.
Thank you both. And Ledger, I. To speak up for the executive session minutes, is it worth just holding these for next meeting so that we can likely approve and release?
You can do that and tonight's executive session together. Come on.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, just do that.
Then we can just release both.
No problem.
Okay, all right. Is the board amenable to that? Just holding the November 24th executive session minutes for next meeting to approve and release?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Okay. So we'll hold those. And then the last set we have is December 1st, 2025, which was the tax classification hearing. I think, Paul, you were the only one that was absent for this one. Harry on Zoom. Otherwise, if there's no questions or concerns, I will entertain a motion to approve the December 1st, 2025, meeting minutes as presented.
So moved.
Meeting, uh, motion, is there a second? Harry, oh, Leah's here. Did we have, did we have a second?
Yeah, yeah.
Harry, second. Okay, all right. So roll call. Alex.
All right. Abstained.
Harry. Thank you. And Ledger, I. All right, thank you. All right, eighty minutes. All set. All right, I will move into public comment. Is there anybody here for public comment? Name and address, please.
Emma Foster, One Pioneer Circle. I just wanted to continue to iterate our stance coming from the Woodside Ave Pioneer Circle neighborhood and offer some sentiment as we are going to discuss the warrant tonight and the special town meeting for January 5th. And, you know, we are a neighborhood of very young families primarily and very diverse families, which are two things that I think that we're lacking in Rutland. And I think it's nice to see these types of families start to move into town. And I want to just iterate that we don't want to be pushing away young families and diverse families here. It's important that we continue to grow our demographic in town. And for anybody concerned about these roads going through and costing the residents money, we are currently seventeen houses on our Phase Three side at approximately $7,000 a year in property tax. That comes out to be somewhere in the $120,000 a year property taxes that the town is collecting from our neighborhood currently. And we are not receiving those town services. So I think that's important to keep in the front of our minds when we're discussing this. So I just wanted to offer that sentiment.
Is there anybody else for public comment? Okay. Actually, before we move into communications and whatnot, can we go back to the TA's contract? Sorry. We had the discussion in executive session. So just while we're in open session, there were no comments or anything regarding the contract that was presented. So I will entertain a motion to approve and sign the employment agreement between the Town of Rutland and Heather Butler to serve as the Town Administrator for a term beginning on January 5th, 2026, and ending on June 30th, 2029. So moved.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any last discussion on that? All right, roll call. Alex.
All right.
Whitman.
Matt and I.
Harry.
He's muted.
Yes, Sekman, I.
Thank you. And Ledger, I. All right, so everything with the contract is all set. Thank you. Sorry about not going back to that. All right, communications, member comments, announcements, Town Administrator update. Just a few things on my side. We just want to thank the Historical Society and the volunteers for everything that has gone into the Festival of Trees opening weekend. Got all the gorgeous trees out in the lobby. I saw there's ornaments, there's coasters that have been made. So that's, that's great for the 25th anniversary. So come out and see them. They're going to be on display this week through Saturday with some additional events running throughout that time. We have the holiday giving tree up in the annex. We've got a lot more names this year than we did last year. So if you are able, please stop up and grab an ornament and help provide for a child this Christmas. If you could, if you do bring one, if you could return the unwrapped gifts by December 15th back to the annex so that they can be delivered. And we'd like to thank the DPW for their efforts during the first snowstorm. And for all the residents, if you need it, there is public sand available at the DPW. Just bring your bucket and shovel. It is available 24/7. Any other member announcements? All right, I will turn it over to Mr. Town Administrator, please.
Okay. Update on the FY '27 budget cycle. All departments have submitted their requests. It's been put together very well. Just finalizing revenue estimates with the Town Accountant. And once that's complete, they will be sent out to both the Select Board and the Finance Committee as a draft version at this point. Thank you, everyone, for coming out last week for the tax classification hearing on December 1st. We got notified on December 3rd from the Department of Revenue that they agreed with our tax classification and has certified our tax rate. Tax bills have gone to the printer and they will be mailed out the first or second week of January. Update on the Town Accountant, Town Planner. We have made an offer and hired for a new Town Accountant. Her name is Kate Messina. She currently is serving as the Assistant Town Accountant in the Town of Lester. She will be starting on Monday, the 15th. Our current Town Accountant, who will be retiring very shortly, will help transition her for the remainder of this month. And she said she will be, keep herself available during the fiscal year to help her along the way as we make this transition. On the Town Planner side, position was advertised. All the resumes are in. We are reviewing them. We're holding off until the new Town Administrator starts in a couple of weeks to make sure that she has, be included in the whole process of hiring this important position. Update on DPW union negotiations. We've had two successful meetings so far. Everything's moving along very well. We anticipated having a draft agreement by the end of the month. And we presented to the Board early January for ratification. So that's moving along very well. Things that were discussed tonight in the paramedic training program, you'll see similar language in their contract as well for continuing education training as well. Last week, we held our department head meeting. It was a great chance for everyone to get together, get up to speed on various projects each department is having and ongoing. It was a great opportunity. We invited Heather to come and join us. It was a good time to meet and greet with all the staff. It was a good time to socialize and get a chance to, or to get a chance to meet everyone. So it was a good opportunity. Historically, we normally close town offices early on Christmas Eve. We're doing something a little different this year. We are holding through the combined effort of our office. We'll be holding a staff holiday brunch that morning on Christmas Eve. We have hired a catered come-in for the basement of the library. Town offices will be open from eight to nine in the morning on Christmas Eve for anyone last minute things. Town office staff will be allowed to close their offices at nine, come to the library until noon, enjoy the fellowship and time together, full catered brunch for everyone. There'll be Christmas movies playing and stuff like that. So we look forward to having that opportunity. Staff will be allowed to leave at noon for the day. And that's all I have.
Thank you. I appreciate that, a little recognition of the staff and just giving them some time to mingle.
Yep.
Any questions for Seth? Harry, you good? Any questions? All right. All right, we'll move into appointments and resignations. We have an appointment, a letter of interest for the RDIC, the Development and Industrial Commission. We have Mr. Randy Jordan, who has expressed interest in serving on the RDIC. We have his letter of interest as well as a letter of recommendation from the RDIC Committee stating their recommendation that Randy be appointed to the commission. So we are here. Does anybody have any questions or anything for Randy? I know we have your letter of interest. I won't make you restate your, unless you want to get up and say anything.
I think, can I just? I appreciate the interest. I think I struggle, and I've said this not just for this appointment, but for all of them, that it seems like we have a lot of the same people serving on multiple boards and committees and a lot of elected officials serving across different boards and committees. And so I think that that still is, I appreciate Randy's interest, but also as an elected moderator and as an ICOM member, looking at RDIC, we would have two ICOM members and two planning board members, I believe, on, serving on RDIC, just as a conversation piece or a point of information, I guess. But I also realize that we have not been successful at recruiting new individuals. And I wonder if some of that is because we need to look at across the board, the boards and committees and kind of the function of them and everything to, I don't know. That's just my.
Yeah, and maybe some of that ties into the, the new business, a topic that we have. I mean, more specific to RDIC, just placing more directive on some of the committees if there's anything. I don't know if it's, you know, maybe worthwhile, a separate conversation for the board to have, you know, do we provide specific directives for committees if there's anything outside of their charge, you know, review that on an annual basis or something like that, something that we can certainly consider.
And I believe, I believe for, like, the state ethics and everything, Select Board shouldn't be serving on any committees for which we appoint people to unless it's as a representative to a certain committee, a Select Board representative. I don't believe that there's any other stipulations, I'm just putting it out there, for other electeds to not be appointed to other boards and committees, again, unless they're appointing themselves to their own committee, which is not the case here.
Yeah, I think the only other is just the Finance Committee.
And that's a bylaw that scenario.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. I guess it's ethics and conflict of interest, sorry.
Okay. All right, I will entertain a motion unless there's any further conversation. Harry, don't want to leave you out.
Nope, I hear. I appreciate it. No comment.
Okay.
I just wanted to state, we're happy, because we've been searching for, in my term, two years to try to get our board to, after the last individual resigned, because we were 4-4. It's tough when you get into a tie vote. So the fact that Mr. Jordan's wanted to join is a God send us, because we've been trying to recruit for well over a year and a half. So I can't say, I can't thank him enough for joining, because now we'll be able to actually have a 3-2, or we'll have a odd number to make our vote. So I just want to put that out there. I know that he's tied up with ICOM and moderator, but I just appreciate his effort to be on the RDIC and give us that fifth person.
Was, was this advertised for, like, for everybody? It was well advertised and publicized that this position was available?
Yeah, to me, that's very good.
And I don't understand why you would hesitate if you've only got, did you only get one application for it?
Oh, yeah, no, there's, I wasn't saying any of that. Just, yeah, no, it's advertised. I think it's, it's something we've seen consistently. Unfortunately, we just don't see the volume of volunteers.
Yeah, and that's everywhere.
And so, yeah. All right, if there's no other discussion, I will entertain a motion to appoint Randy Jordan to the RDIC to serve until June 30th, 2028.
So moved.
Motion, is there a second?
Second, I'm on.
Any further discussion? All right, roll call. Alex.
All right.
Harry.
Sekman, I.
Thank you. And Ledger, I. Thank you, Randy. You know, the drill, just up to town clerks to get sworn in, and then you're up and running. All right, we have no old business on the agenda. So moving into new special business, we have the joint discussion with RDIC, who is here with us tonight. You did open your meeting, correct?
Yes, 16:15.
So this agenda item was at the request of the Chair of the RDIC, looking to, the joint discussion with the Select Board with dissolution of the EDC, just to clarify charges, see if there's any, any change or any specific directives from the Select Board with regards to the RDIC, given that the EDC is no longer in operation. So, Tim, as Chair.
The Committee, because the way our charge was set up, we were sort of, if you want to use a phrase, the management portion of the RDIC and town property. Now with the EDC basically in, being dissolved, we wanted to talk with the Select Board and find out, should we be picking up some of their charge by, we believe, marketing? I mean, we've internally been talked about 68, about marketing some property, getting a commercial real estate developer involved. And it's sort of outside of our charge, since we're sort of the management portion. But we wanted to talk with the Select Board and see if that should be, we should, I guess, if you want to call it morph into that role of also marketing some of these town properties that are available to be used for commercial development, bring in business, such like that. So we were looking for a little bit of direction, if that's where the Select Board wants us to head. Do we need to redo our charge, add something extra to it? Looking for a little direction is, I guess, the reason we want to have this joint meeting, you guys.
I'll, I'll open it to the Board, I guess, with the first question of, we have the, the two charges in front of us, the current RDIC charge and then the, the charge for the EDC. I'll leave it up to the Board to comment on, do we feel that there's a need to make any change to the RDIC charge? Or is it, is, is there a feeling that the dissolution of the EDC should not impact what their original charge is?
Through, through the Chair?
Uh, go ahead, Harry.
Kim, or through the whole Committee, did, did you review the bylaw for the RDIC charge to see how that fits in with what you have here?
There, yeah, Harry, there's no bylaw for the RDIC. There's the, it's the HPDD, right? The Harmony that has a bylaw? It's in Arizona.
HPDD.
Zoning laws.
That's zoning.
That zoning law.
When the property originally came to the RDIC, they had a charge that was, if you will, approved by the state into what their job was to do, if you will. So I'm trying to figure out, and that goes back, I don't know, 20 years, 25 years, at least 30? If this coincides with that edict.
Oh, okay.
It's a special act of 2000, Chapter 245, an act providing for the disposition of certain property at the Rutland Heights State Hospital. But that, I think, Harry, I think this is, some of it is, for a while, I think RDIC was working as being solely as a Heights property. But when I think RDIC was established, and I'm going back to, look, I believe in 1965, again, through acceptance of MGL at town meeting, that was their role, the commission's role at that time was more broad than solely the Heights property. The Heights property was called out specifically in that special act when the town acquired the property.
Right, so I guess my question is, when that was originally formed, what were the tasks associated with the RDIC under that? And are any of those tasks missing? Or are they added to on the charge that we see here?
I, I can't comment. I don't know. Go ahead, Michelle.
The, the 1965, I have a copy of that vote, but I also have something else that I forgot to send. There is something that says that it, there's a state MGL for, for development and industrial councils, and it refers to that state document that lays out what a, what a, towns DIC does.
It's Chapter 47, 8A.
So, so it is outlined, it's per mass state law, like what, what our charge is. But, but then it's kind of morphed over time, so are we going?
Well, you know, I guess my comment is, is that it has morphed, we, we're responsible for a little more, but the original charges, are they at least there? And then we've added on to that. Or are at least the original charges of what the RDIC was to do, are they incorporated into that charge that we see here?
I honestly, I can't comment, because I haven't seen, I haven't read through the MGL that Leah just mentioned or the, the special act, so I don't.
So 8A, if, I haven't pulled up. It's, "A city or town which accepts this section may establish a development industrial commission for the promotion and development of the industrial resources of said city or town. Such commission shall conduct researches into industrial conditions, investigate and assist in the establishment of educational or commercial projects, including projects involving private enterprise, for the purpose of expanding or strengthening the local economy, and shall seek to coordinate the activities of unofficial bodies organized for said purposes, and may advertise, prepare, print and distribute books, maps, charts and pamphlets, which in its judgment will further the purpose for which it is established. The commission may appoint such clerks and other employees as it may require." Then there's an additional paragraph, if you would like me to read it, but that was the first paragraph.
Jen, that was, that was.
So I guess, if I may, through the Chair, what I'm saying is, the reading of that suggests to me that we don't really need anything of the old EDC charge, because it's kind of incorporated or encapsulated into that particular document.
And are you talking about the MGL, Harry?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I wonder if it's worthwhile just taking a closer look at that and seeing if there's anything specific that should be pulled out, or we can even reference the MGL in the RDIC charge and pull out anything specific to bring to the forefront. But if it's.
It might be worthwhile for us to go back and look at the meeting minutes, because, Leah, can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think all of these conversations were had last summer when they were nailing down the two charges. So I imagine a lot of that discussion already took place and is documented in the minutes.
Okay, so why don't we, we can do a little bit of digging, again, just to see if there's any specific directives. I'd like to take a look at the, the MGL. And then, if there's anything specific on, in the special act, you said it, what's, what was it, it's 245?
It's, uh, session laws, Acts 2, Acts of 2000, Chapter 245. I can send the links around. I'll send them to, I guess I'll send them to Saff and Tamika, and you can distribute them accordingly.
That would be great, yeah.
And for that and the MGL.
Yep.
Okay.
I think, if I may, to speak on what Tamika said about the conversation a year and a half or two years ago, that was obviously in the context of when we had an EDC and we were trying to differentiate between EDC and RDIC. And I think there, throughout the iterations that I've been on the Board, I don't think there's been a whole lot of attention paid to the charges. It's been more recent in the past few years that across the whole town, we've been, the Select Board has been looking at Boards and Committee charges. But this one has been bounced back and forth. And I feel, even since I've been on the Board, it's really been at the whim of the Board. And I think RDIC has had some priorities, you know, first, it was always the Heights property, and then it was, oh, you should be doing everything else. And it's, what do you mean, you should be doing everything else? We're on the Heights property, you know? So I think, maybe now if RDIC, or if, sorry, since EDC is dissolved, and there's the Rutland Business Association making the comeback, going back to that MGL at, for RDIC and look at that and kind of expand more broadly, but really with the push of working to encourage economic develop, across the industrial, I mean, I think the focus on MGL is industrial, but do industrial and economic across the board, not solely at the Heights. Obviously, the special act calls out the RDIC as the, the property management of the Heights property.
Yeah.
But beyond that, I think that, yeah.
Yeah, to me, it seems like the, the RDIC is more under, at the town level, understanding what properties we have that could be utilized for said purposes, trying to understand if they're not zoned properly for the purposes, helping to get them that way, working with the Rutland Business Association, things along those lines. Go ahead, Tim.
That, that was one of the other topics we wanted to bring up with you, is we've sort of identified on 68, thanks to John Carbono putting together the positions of some properties that we could engage a commercial real estate. We wanted to make sure that the Select Board, that's something that they're comfortable with, because our, our next step would be to come to you guys, because we can't sign contracts, and get engaged with a commercial real estate broker and start basically marketing those properties for commercial use. So that, that's why we were looking for, the, because the charge at the time was broken up, that the. So that, that's why we were looking for the, because the charge at the time was broken up, that the EDC, the best way to describe it, they were the advertising and sales wing, we were, the RDIC was the management and maintenance side of. Yeah, basically the real estate guys of, of the town. But with them dissolving, that doesn't really exist anymore, so we've sort of moved forward and looked at some potential properties that were available that we could put out a commercial, and we've identified one or two in sixty-eight. And we're, before we get moving, we wanted to make sure the Select Board was on board with that, and also the fact that we would need a commercial real estate developer to be involved, and that's something we can't sign. We can suggest, we can bring them to the table, but ultimately, the Select Board would be signing that contract. So we wanted to put that out.
Or, or we could do the RFP process again, we've got an old RFP, so that's another way to go, but.
Correct.
So let me, let me put this out to the board, is that, is the step of engaging a real estate broker for some of these properties something that we would expect from the RDIC? Or is it more, like you said, just identifying the properties? And is there another in-between that would actually take the step of seeking out potential commercial opportunities or industrial opportunities to move into those locations? Whether it's right now the TA's office, or if it is the Rutland, not, I mean, the RBA doesn't work for the town anymore, but does it fall under the purview of the RDIC? And again, some of these questions, I feel like I can't quite answer without having taken a look at them.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, that, you know, anyone who's willing to help, I think that this conversation started in the fact that we struggled to find volunteers for serving on boards and committees. So if we're worried about, you know, who else is going to take on the other aspect that they're talking about as far as selling the piece of land, or getting somebody involved in selling pieces of land, you know, we're certainly not going to find volunteers to do that. So if we have a group that's already willing and wanting to do that, you know, I think that in accordance and in working with the town administrator's office or whoever appointed, that needs to be, you know, worked together on it, because we want to make sure that whatever they're doing does not go against what other departments might be looking at using the property for and all that stuff. But, I mean, if somebody's willing and wanting to do it, I don't see why we wouldn't be okay with them moving forward. Doesn't mean we're doing anything, right, we have to sign it, it has to make sense, but.
So allowing, allowing the RDIC to kind of run with a project plan, bringing that back to the, because we have, would have to sign a contract.
You can do something through the chair.
Sure, please.
RDIC would need to figure out which pieces of property they want to go for. The Select Board would have to bring it to town meeting.
Okay.
Because you can't dispose of town property without.
Without.
A town meeting vote.
Yeah, okay.
Then, once that vote is, the, the town makes that decision, then the RFP can be had, and then you guys can move forward with that whole process.
Okay.
But we can, we can come up with a step-by-step process on how to do that, that way it's clear that everyone is aware of that.
I, I think that would be good, having a step-by-step process, and I'm also wondering if, if it's, does it make sense to do it as a, you know, on a one-time basis, meaning like, well, we focused on this property and we think it is, so let's take that to town meeting. Should there, it's, you know, it says right in here, an inventory of available vacant or underutilized properties. Do we have that inventory?
Correct.
Is there, in that spreadsheet or whatever it is, does it state what the uses of it could potentially be? So that we have a list of potential properties that we could consider selling for these commercial uses or leasing out whatever it may be, so that we can just have that all said and done at a single town meeting, potentially?
Yeah, I think, oh, sorry.
I think, excuse me, Jen, but I think even more basic than that, though, is before we start talking about selling pieces of town-owned property, I mean, we all know they're not making land anymore. Is there, are there uses and is there interest within the town? I mean, I, obviously for, since my kids were young, we don't have enough playing fields, we don't, you know, no soccer fields. You know, one of these parcels in particular is.
How many acres?
Twenty-five acres that, you know, should we be selling that? I don't know, you know, I, I, I think someone like your board needs to get the, the principals of the town, you know, Rec and whoever else they are, and say, okay, folks, we'll give you the list, and we'll tell you what the parcels are and what the zoning is, and then we need to, I think, have a joint meeting and say, okay, is there interest in these things? And if there is, all right, we back off, those aren't ones we want to advertise, and maybe these over here are. But the, the, I mean, the other part of this too, that we've been talking about in depth, is doing selective tree cutting on those to generate income that, you know, may be significant, we don't know that yet. But we don't want to go down the road of, of, you know, potentially working with a, a forester and everything else, and then have you folks, and we come to you and say, okay, we can, we can do this, and we can potentially make whatever the number is, twenty-five thousand dollars off, and then you guys go, oh, sorry, that, well, why are you doing that? We don't want to do that. So somehow we need to, you folks need to give us some much more specific direction on the town-owned land.
Wouldn't that also be on you guys to recommend usage for that land? I, I mean, I, like.
Well, I'm talking about specifically town-owned, uh, town uses.
Yeah. So, I mean, if you have land that you think that would sell and be able to use commercially, as stated, the process, I mean, to me, RDIC's role is to say, hey, we think that this is a great development piece for commercial or industrial use, we think it could generate X dollars for the town, this is what we think makes the most sense. You bring that to us, and then eventually town meeting, right? And, you know, to me, the other departments, such as you mentioned Rec, should be at the same spot saying, no, we think that should be used for Rec because of all the value it's going to bring XYZ, and then the found, the town votes on it. I mean, to me, that's, that's how this is meant to work, because then everyone's putting their, you know, what makes the most sense for everyone, and then the town gets to vote on it, and that's, you know, that should be the way, where I, I know that, that the problem is that Rec never hears about it, and, but like, I think that, that maybe we just need to, and I'm not saying we haven't done a good job, but maybe we just need to make sure that we're making people aware of those things. I, I, I just, I think that, that recommendation comes from RDIC and let the town vote on it.
But I think to, to add on to what you're saying, Alex, I think it's, the RDIC should also, once you have that inventory, you should feel empowered to go through the TA's office to, to work with the department heads on, can there, are there any valid town uses for any of these properties? Does Rec see benefit in this property for soccer fields, baseball fields, whatever it may be? Anything like that, you know, a DPW use, you know, it, it's not going to happen next year, but is it something that we should hang on to? Because there's, should be some serious consideration for, for those town uses. We, we know we have a space problem, so, you know, do we keep the land with the intent of, at some point, being able to put a new town building on it, you know, for a new senior center, or for a new DPW building, whatever it may be? But I, I would like to think that the RDIC would feel empowered to work with the TA's office to, to touch base with those department heads and get some of that information and feedback on the town side, at least.
I realize I'm not part of the committee, but I was part of the Economic Development Committee, and we had a lot of discussion there, right? I think, I think the best thing that we as a committee can do is come to you with some suggestions, right? And then potentially, hey, we think we should sell this, we should keep this, we should potentially put a highway barn here, or whatever. Nobody's got the crystal ball that's clear, right, and that's the problem to do it. Personally, I don't think we should sell property unless it's not going to ever be used for it, because, again, like Mr. Sullivan said, a wise man, that they're not making any more, right? We're not in a position to, Rutland Heights was different, it's in the center kind of thing, and we can do some of that stuff, but yet, why can't we bring a soccer field forward to there? So there's a lot of things that I think the committee can do with what they're doing. I don't think you guys would ever say to us, hey, that's not in your purview, because the economics not there anymore. If they merge into there a little bit to grow with it, I think this committee can run with it. The problem is, we've got to have communication better than it has been in the past, right? And then that's been a weak area of all town committees as a whole and officials, is, hey, we come back to you in, within six months and have two or three questions, hey, we're thinking about X for this, and you say, hey, jeez, you know, we don't agree with you and the TA's office saying that we need XYZ, or let's sell this because we'll never do anything with it, or whatever, right? There's enough other properties out there that we can make beneficial, or properties to do it. Look at Holden, they just put a new highway build, uh, highway department up, and soccer fields up, all in a matter of property that they didn't own, right? They had to buy it and do all that, we're in a better position, potentially, to do it. But yet, if you look back at the master plan, and very few people in town have actually opened up and looked, in my opinion, right? What's they say, eighty-eight percent of the people in there say they want open space. So why are we going to get rid of open space that we currently have that could be used for something? And I have to excuse myself, because I have another meeting to go to, and if I don't get there, I might get yelled at.
We don't want that.
Were you gonna say something earlier?
I think that reporting, you know, quarterly or monthly or whatever, is something that we would, we would all benefit from. So we would all have an idea of what you're thinking, where you're heading, and what you're looking at. I mean, these are the types of things that we've been interested in, that in my mind have been somewhat deficient. And so, you know, if we can improve on that, and so that everybody has a good idea of what's happening, then I think we'd probably be able to move along, more coordinated efforts.
All right, so we've kind of talked a, a little bit about some of the various charge pieces. I, I think it's worthwhile for us to, to get the additional documentation for the board to review for consideration of updating any of the charge if necessary. But as far as the RDIC being here tonight, if, is there any, anything, based on what we do have in their current charge, that this board feels should be a priority for them to focus on as a, a directive?
I, I think for me personally, right, right now, is seeing that list of available or underutilized properties. And I think there had been some work done, I believe, with CMRPC, and I'm not sure if it was through RDIC or if it was with the planner and EDC, had even worked with some, to try to find some privately owned land, and per MGL, RDIC can work with private as well, just to see if there's patches or areas that make more sense or may be underutilized. And again, not that we're taking over anybody's lands, but just so we can see what we're working with before we make these decisions. Another thing that I've been kind of asking and asking and asking is, since Harmony Place has gone in, and that parcel from Rutland Heights has, was sold, and through a lot of hard work from the RDIC, it sold for a, a, a good amount of money, and that loan has been paid back as well, paid back, has been recovered for the taxpayers, but then there's still available parcels there. The Heights has a master plan that was done in the early two thousands, but now that that parcel has changed, and to Ms. Foster's comments during public meeting, town has changed a lot. And so maybe after we have this list, and keeping in mind also the Heights, doing some sort of public information session to get an idea for the, from the public as to what, where their priorities might be. We, you know, we hear about Holden doing their DPW, they, those, the taxpayers made that commitment and voted in favor of the debt exclusion for that. We couldn't even pass a debt exclusion to fund much-needed facility work here. So I think that there needs to be that level of communication, and I don't want to say education, but just, uh, some of it is that laying out the facts, that this is what we have, this is where town is going, this is where we're deficient, and if you're okay being deficient in those spots, then that's okay, but if you're not, which we hear a lot of people aren't, there's a cost to that, unfortunately, and we can't continue to just sit there and say, we're not going to do anything because we're not going to fund it, because it's only going to get more expensive, and it's only going to become a bigger and bigger problem. So we know, facility-wise, we're outgrowing space, we know we don't have just public safety, and even library and town offices, DPW, everything. We know, again and again and again, that recreation has kind of been the forgotten child through all of this, and we're fortunate to have some good, very engaged nonprofit organizations that work within the community to do that. But that could also be an, an avenue to generate some income. And again, I'm not necessarily thinking that this is going to be, we're never, I don't, I don't think that Rutland is ever going to be a huge commercial mecca, even to the size of Shrewsbury or something. Um, we're not there, I don't, you know, I think even pushing towards Holden is going to be tough. But if we have facilities that may be able to draw people into town, that the, then people as visitors are then going to come in and spend money at our local restaurants, hopefully we have a couple more restaurants that are able to open and do well, and, you know, spend money at the marketplace and the gas stations and, and the coffee shops and everything, then, then that's still bringing some different economic development in. It's not, we're, I don't think, I don't foresee us ever getting to the point that we're going to be able to have a split tax rate, that we're going to be able to have a huge significant decrease on the tax burden, but hopefully not adding a number more of single-family homes or, or, um, homes that continues to add to the school population. We have that no matter what, but a way to kind of balance that. And I personally am less concerned about the money right now, making a little bit of money, than I am about having an idea as to what it, what we have for land and what the potential options are. I don't think, you know, that's for me personally. And I think if, I mean, I think town, historically, I just went back and looked briefly, and if my information is correct, from, since two thousand fifteen, through different articles at town, at town meetings, special article usually from free cash, town meeting has appropriated over seventy thousand dollars to RDIC to fund different things. And so in addition to purchasing the Heights property, which was not an RDIC request, that was a town request, but I don't think that the town has been overly begrudging, but I think the town does have some expectations if we've given, if we've given seventy, almost seventy-one thousand dollars in the past ten years. What, what are we seeing there, I guess?
So, so you, you fell off. That is your last thought?
No, just that if, um, if, so I think, uh, six, around sixty thousand of this was work at the Heights property, for sure. The other ten was professional services and related to expenses for the RDIC. But just if, and, and we know that the Heights had, had that top property sold, but I'm just, a lot of the comments that I hear around town from our residents is, if we're giving anybody money, any group's money, then what's the, what, what are we seeing in return? And so it wasn't, you're not here asking us for money now, I'm not saying that at all. But I'm just saying that, that the town hasn't been begrudging, in my opinion, in, in a lot of the asks for the work that needs to be done to have valid outcomes. So if there needs to be money invested, I don't think the town, whether it's hiring a commercial real estate agent or investing on the RFP process side or something, I don't think the town is necessarily begrudging that if there's going to be some sort of clear move forward.
But so, I, I guess where I'm confused is, so for seventy or sixty thousand dollars, the, the return from the RDIC has been one point six five million dollars?
I think I've given RDIC a whole lot of.
Well, I'm not asking for credit, all I'm saying is, how can anybody be upset by that? Or, or not understand that that's a reasonable return on investment? I mean, I, I just, I can't imagine why someone would say, oh my God, we spent sixty thousand dollars, and we've only made, we only sold the property for one point six five million? Doesn't add up to me.
I, I'm not saying that, I guess, I will just leave it at that.
No, I, please, I mean, you're a select, but I want to hear your opinion if you disagree.
I, I, I guess I heard comments about wanting to do the forestry management piece and do that, when I think that there could be better opportunities to at least see what we have. And I'm not, I'm not one that sold, there's a whole MGL process for forestry management. It's Select Board or Conservation is how that is mapped out. But I'm not one that necessarily thinks, oh, I, I would like to hear from a commercial real estate agent or someone more than myself, that that's going to make land more marketable, if that's. that that's going to make land more mar- marketable if that's the, the avenue that we're going. Do I think that maybe the town should invest in a forest management plan for the health and wellbeing of the, the land? Yes, but not necessarily for the marketability piece. And so I think that that's another difference also.
I don't understand what that has to do with Rutland Heights because this, this tree harvesting has already been done at Rutland Heights. So I, I, I don't see what, I don't see where you're coming from there, but. I guess, I guess, you know, to hear you say that you've heard and, and you know, no one ever comes to us and says, hey, you know, why, what's going on? Uh, because to me it's frustrating to, to, to listen to one of our town fathers, mothers, whatever, whatever we call the select board, um, frustrated that they've spent sixty thousand dollars and gotten one point six five million dollars in return. But, and you know, I stand, I, I, I should further clarify. You got one point six five million dollars in your pocket, the town's coffers. In addition to that, you got a million dollar roadway to connect to Rutland, to, to, to connect to the school. And you got a million dollar water and sewer connection through Forest Hill. So take the one point six five and add another two million dollars to it. That's what the town, the value of that sale has been to the town. So I, I don't get anybody frustrated with where that project is right now. It makes no sense to me whatsoever. I'm happy to listen if, if someone can give me some reason to think differently.
The other comment, maybe they, you guys need, uh, updates. Like if I'm not mistaken, on the Harmony Place website, they've got either sold or under contract approximately nineteen houses in their phase one already. So they're definitely picking up steam as opposed to what they had before with the national grid issue and then the ZBA. So there is some movement where we're getting, we're gonna be getting larger on top of that money, tax revenue coming in from houses being sold. So there's positives and, uh, we, we'd really like to get through phase one. And then once, and the board has said, once we've got through phase one and we're in the phase two of sales, then we can start looking at some of the other, uh, the one piece of property that's closest to, uh, Maple Ave as potential for commercial down the road for an RP, RFP. So that's the thought process where we've been, but.
It's the other one.
Yeah, that's the other, other side.
Before I say, go ahead, Michelle.
So also in reading through that, and I, I'm sorry, I didn't bring a copy of it with me. Um, the, the MGL where the, talks about what the RDIC's responsibilities are. And one of them can be, it, it's to beautify the town. Like I think I read something in there about like beautifying the town to make it more, what is it called? Like support projects that you, beautify the town that will draw businesses to the town as well. So even if it's not that we're selling the land ourselves or selling the Rutland property, but, but trying to attract businesses to town. So if, I, I, I don't disagree with you Leah, that, that maybe Concom or some, or the select board or someone else does the forest management, but where no one else has picked it up and we're willing to pick it up, I, I guess that's, is that something that we should do? Or does the select board want someone else to do that or do you not wanna do it at all? But that's another thing that could potentially make the town more marketable.
I, I agree with Leah. I think before, I, I would want feedback and details from at minimum the Conservation Commission, um, on their experience with it before doing anything. Cause I don't know if anybody has approached them about their experience with forestry management, who's, should management, what a plan looks like, who's generally responsible for that. I think we need to at least get their feedback. Um, I do agree with your, your comment. Now, I, I mean, even in the charge here, it's not necessarily all about economic development. It's community development. So even if it's not something that's, we're selling or that we're trying to get commercial business in, there's still community development, something that we can utilize to benefit our own community. Yes, at our expense or through grants or whatever that may be. Um, but that's also part of what the charge is here is preparation and filling out of application for grants or other funding opportunities. Again, not necessarily to sell property or bring in commercial business, but benefiting us as a town. What do we need and how can we utilize these assets in that endeavor? So I guess just to, to keep things on track with the agenda item, I, I, I would, like I said, I'd like to distribute the documentation on the MGL and, um, and everything that, that Leah had for us to take a look at and see, uh, you know, again, if there's anything specific in the RDIC charge that we need to update. Um, but Leah already mentioned it and I, I'm also of the same thinking, at least for a starting point. I agree, I'd like to see what that inventory is, what the inventory is, what is it zoned? What are the potential uses for it? And then bring that back so that we can start having further discussions on what's the next step? Do we focus on something for, something for the community? Is this something where we might wanna consider selling a piece if there's really true, no true use for it for the town? Um, but I think we need to have something to look at to have a starting point. And I think if we're talking about anything as far as tree clearing or anything, I think until we have this list and have some idea of potential uses, I think that's premature. Um, so that would be my first directive again. Action item for this board, just reviewing the documentation, updating the charge. RDIC coming up with that inventory. That's, that's me.
I think if we had an idea of what the properties were that we were looking at and if we knew, you know, a lot more about what their thinking is and where they're looking, where they're looking to go, it would be more beneficial to us because as Leah mentioned, there are people who contact, she's in contact with, who have an issue with what's this? Why, why did this happen this way and so on and so forth? And, and I get the same questions, okay? People wanting to know, you know, okay, what's going on up there? What are, what are they working on? What other properties in town are available? So on and so forth. So I mean, these are things that people are questioning, people are asking about, so you know.
I, I guess I'll make a general comment to that, anybody on the select board. Please do not hesitate that to get them in touch with the RDIC. We will give them all of this, um, information. Mike, uh, I put him in charge of direct contact with Laurel Adams at Harmony Place. So he has a, uh, uh, basic, has her ear whenever we need or questions that we can get in touch with her and ask any questions. We've got updates, she's got her website for Harmony Place. Um, I think it's harmonyplace.com, I can't remember exactly. But they've got all of the prop, the, the different buildings that are open that are available to be, um, sold. Um, they've even, they give the, talk about, about the community center that they're building. So there's a lot of good information. So please don't hesitate to push them our way. Cause I really wouldn't expect you guys to know all the details of what's going on up there, especially since we have an inside track with the developer. So please don't hesitate to pass them our way.
And to Randy's point on communication, I mean, this is a perfect example of it. I mean, here we have two selectmen saying they've got personal concerns and people talking to them, yet we don't, we don't know that. And it's, it's ridiculous.
I will say, I encourage them to attend RDIC meetings. I think sometimes they don't always feel welcomed at our meetings or any other meetings.
Oh, but you're a selectman, if you're, you're saying you're hearing this from a lot of people.
I mean, I've talked to you, Mike, and I've told you that I've, uh, specifically about the Heights property about, and I've advocated for holding off until there's more development up there. I've had those conversations with you. I don't think that that's a surprise. I don't think it's a surprise that those conversations continue to happen. I continue to say the same thing. I've also asked if the RDIC would consider having a information session to get feedback from the broader community as to now that the Heights, that part of it has been sold and commu- the town has changed a lot in the twenty-five years since that's happened. Is there, because if you get buy-in, if we get buy-in from the public, then it's easier, easier to advance projects. And that's what I said tonight, maybe once we have a list of the town on land, then we as select board go and put those information sessions on to try to get some info- in, information back. We have some of it coming through, hopefully the open space and rec plan is approved at the state. And then it, then the master plan is actually approved and we can reference those two as well as this public information session and move forward. That's all I'm saying.
I think through the chair, to Leah, to answer some of your question. I mean, when we had John Carbonow here, he was starting that up because part of his role was economic development. That was part of his job title. And I'm hoping with the new planner that we'll get, we'll get somebody with five, ten, fifteen years' experience that has that ability to do the same thing. And, and John put on a phenomenal, uh, information session for the sixty-eight when he did the study for Route sixty-eight. I would expect if that's something the select board was looking for, the RDIC could work with the town planner and make that happen and easily have an information session. But again, right now, I, I can say Harmony Place's website is pretty, uh, robust in what, uh, they're explaining about their developments, their model homes, what they're offering. So if anybody's interested in that portion of it, they definitely can, uh, and maybe we need to put that on our town website. I don't know.
It is there.
Okay.
It's linked on the RDIC page. It actually has its own tab, I'm sorry Jen, I should've said through the chair. Um, it actually has its own tab in the, the main mega menu.
Excellent, because that, that's a phenomenal, uh, website. And you can click on availability and it'll take you right to what's been on contract, what's available in the first phase. So excellent website. That's it. Thanks.
Harry, I just wanna see if you had any, anything that you wanted to add?
Thank you, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I am thankful that the RDIC came to see us and that it looks like they were looking for, unless I'm misquoting here, what kind of charge do we see them going through or doing? And in process of doing that, we need documentation to be able to arrive at some decisions to see what's the best charge for the RDIC. So in my opinion, I appreciate them coming forth, but now we have to do our job and look at just the charge of the RDIC and how they can make this town better going forward. Cause that's ultimately their charge. We're here to help them. And I, hopefully we can do that, uh, by helping them have the right kind of charge.
Yeah, I, I agree, Harry. And I think we'll, we'll, like I said, we'll pull the documentation and distribute that and then we can, um, put the charge back on an upcoming meeting to hopefully finalize something, uh, something new. Um, is there any concern with, uh, again, just trying to provide a directive for RDIC to work on till we get anything further to, to work on that, prioritize that inventory? Do you have any concern with that, Harry?
Yeah, that would be okay. Uh, uh, again, you know, I won't say, I, I feel kind of like the RDIC has been here several times asking us what they should do. And, and I don't know if it was a point in time or if it was just the right, not the right time to really formulate an actual what they need to do from, because whatever is decided is gonna carry forward from one board to the next, from one RDIC to the next. And I wanna make sure we encapsulate that, that's right for the town.
Yep.
So I, I agree. We need to get that stuff and yeah, we can start with that and then get all the MGLs and all the other documents distributed to the board members.
Just a, a quick, I can only hope. I wanted the forestry thing here ever since the last time we ever had forestry done in this town. Well, other than RDIC was in fact when I was chair of the Concom many, many moons ago. Please bring in a forester as soon as possible to please get it down into our only park that the town municipality owns because it hasn't done a blooming thing in there for so many years. And Putnam Park needs to be brought back to conditions that people will go down there and observe and love. We need to get forestry done in there and as other places. And if you, I've gone through and you get approximately three hundred, give or take acres that the town of Rutland has jurisdiction over. And if you ever stop to realize that even between Naqog, Central Tree, how many acres of forestry you have in there also is an awful lot. And Glenwood. I mean, I mean, it's all over the place. Even a little small lot across the street here that had the old church on it a long time ago, that's town property. But there again, it might be interesting that you buy the piece of property behind it to expand. But you know, I, I don't listen for what's gonna happen in the future, but it would be very nice to hear it before I'm done here.
Alright, I've got that piece written down. Um, but again, it-
Forestry for the, even get the ad commission to do it. I don't care. Get somebody, get it rolling.
Well, we'll see what we can do to start having some more discussions on that topic. But again, if, we need to know what the inventories are so we know all the properties that might benefit from that type of thing. So that's.
Jen, we have the inventory, so, so we can get together with you anytime to review that. I, I'd just like you to think though about who should be organizing this meeting of town, town departments. I'm not, I don't really think it should be us because none of those departments report to us. They all report to you. So my personal opinion is you folks should be organizing that and saying to your department heads, hey, this is, this is what this meeting is all about. Come prepared to discuss what your needs are. We can ask, but if they don't come. We don't have any authority in, in, in this.
But that's where I was, my comment earlier was to empower, whether it's you, you all vote to, to state that the chair can work with the town administrator's office, even if it's just drafting a memo that they can distribute to the department heads and they can send back feedback. Please provide your feedback to this email and then you can collate that to bring that, you know, that, having the select board do it, we're just the middle person. It's, and it's gonna get lost in translation.
Take selectmen out, we'll call it town administrator.
I, I, that would be my, I mean, like I said, we have the, the committees that have charges. We, I would like to see that empowerment for, for you to take on what's your role. So again, designating somebody from the, to work with the TA, figure out the best way to reach out to those department heads to get that feedback, um, but just using the office and the resources that we have there. And then again, uh, and over here, you know, speaking to the communication piece, you know, maybe we're meeting in December, maybe we look at meeting at the end of first quarter next year, end of March, just to check in and see where are we at? Or if there's anything sooner that you think we should meet jointly again, we can put it on an agenda. Just to have that regular touch base. Okay, we've got our inventory. What's our next step?
I think you should see our inventory.
So if that's all set, then you know, we can take a little bit of time to, like I said, look through this charge stuff. And then maybe in another month or so, we can come back together, take a look at the inventory. What do we wanna do as a next step?
And something along that. If I may, I think, like, I try, I can't follow everything anymore. So I watch YouTube videos of what I can. I look at agendas and I didn't notice recently, and I may have missed a few, that there had been a finalized inventory list. So I apologize if you've had it and it had been spoken at length at a meeting because I didn't see it on an agenda, so I may have missed it in a meeting. It seemed like there's been more recently a lot of forest, forest management conversation at the meetings. And I was looking more specifically for, uh, the, the inventory list. So if we're going to go the forest management route, and my understanding is that it's an, a select board's decision and how it goes, but anyway, that we at least knew what properties we would be looking at and not just picking and choosing.
I agree. Yeah, and if, if you've already got that, if, again, you can send it to the office to distribute, then we can take a look at it and see if there's anything missing again. So that when we have a next meeting, we can hopefully offer you enough time to look into a couple of other things.
Is this list, Karen Greenwood, Seven Breezy Lane, is this list public? Is it somewhere other than somebody's draw?
I think that's what we're trying to figure out tonight.
That's what I've been, we, you know, to my end to ask that question, cause it seems like, oh, there's land. And I know there's land, cause I was on RDIC a few years ago, but it's like, where is this list? I'm curious, where is this land?
It's, it, it is online through the GIS.
We can distribute it.
We can distribute it at our next meeting.
Through parcel mapping, you can pull up town. Yeah, it's, it's easy to compile into a list. And we'll, we'll, once we, once we distribute that list as part of our meeting, it's public documented. So anybody can see it then.
Alright, so just to summarize what I'm seeing here, what I'm hearing, we'll review the charge documents. I'll look with, um, Tamika and if it's amenable to RDIC, we'll look for early February to schedule another joint meeting just to reconvene on the charge. Look at the inventory. Um, I will see what we can do with regards to any forestry management discussion. Maybe reach out to Concom to see if they have either any feedback or would be willing to attend or send a representative to talk about it, um, at that meeting. So then we got all three that we can kind of have a, a discussion about. Um, at that meeting. So then we got all three that we can kind of have a, a discussion about. And just see what our next steps are at that point for.
Jen, you might wanna also talk with the AgCom, cause they've been pretty in-depth with forest management too. So AgCom and ConCon, I think would be two good committees to be involved in that discussion.
Okay, we'll, we'll keep that in mind. Does that sound agreeable to RDIC? Um, so I know we don't have a formalized charge, but again, for that inventory, if you could just get that to the office for us to send out. And then we'll be reconvening in early February. Okay? Anything else from RDIC?
Would you guys like to adjourn? Motion to adjourn.
We can adjourn. We'll meander outside.
Okay.
Will you guys let me know who makes the motion and what time it is for the minutes? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, thank you.
Appreciate you reaching out. All right, um.
Merry Christmas to everybody.
Merry Christmas to you.
Enjoy New Year's, please.
If the board is agreeable, we have, um, a couple of representatives from the Historical Society. Do we mind popping down to that topic so they don't, is that agreeable to the board? Harry, is that okay with you?
Oh, yes, yes, it is.
Okay. Um, so we, for the historical, frankly, we have the Franklin T. Woodhouse, um, several months ago, or I should say maybe last, last year or so, we, um, signed a grant agreement with the Historical Society to utilize the woodhouse. It was, um, for a three-year term. Um, the Historical Society has reached out to the board again, um, with interest to, um, extend that agreement, um, to twenty-five years. Um, the office has done a little bit of review, um, just to make sure that again, we're doing the process correctly. Um, Tamika, I might actually have you, if you don't mind, just with what you were able to, um, obtain from the Inspector General's office, um, and everything with what you've learned for the process.
Sure. Um, so before we brought it to the board, we just wanted to make sure that we understood what the process looked like. And, um, so I spoke with the Inspector General's office last week. And unfortunately, the proper procurement process was not followed the first time. And by law, we will be required to put it out as an RFP, a Request for Proposal. And the Historical Society would apply, um, but it is available to the public to apply as well. Um, I also reached out, um, at the advice of the IGO's office to, uh, DLS. And they, um, advised, their attorney advised that the type of agreement that was initially put in place is not the right type of agreement. So it was put in place as a grant agreement, but that implies that the town is giving a monetary grant in order for you to conduct your operations, which we know is not the case. And it's truly a standard lease agreement. Um, under Mass General Law, the max term we can go to is thirty years, but I know you guys are only looking for twenty-five. He advised that if it's a standard lease agreement, which is what he believes it to be, it does not need to go to town meeting. It's something that can be approved, um, by the Select Board. So he recommended that we defer to our Town Council to confirm what type of agreement it really is, so that we can better understand the process. If it is a grant agreement, it will have to go to town meeting. So we first wanted to gauge where the board was before we expended the funds on Town Council to further research the process. So for now, this is the information we got straight from the state of Massachusetts. And that's kinda where we've landed so far.
So if I'm understanding it right, this, what we signed in two thousand twenty-four isn't proper because we don't get money from the town.
Correct. So the, the agreement is still valid. Yeah, the agreement is still valid. You're fine through its, its end of term in twenty twenty-seven. But he said, in reading the language, it's really a standard lease agreement because essentially the town isn't giving you money and you're not giving the town money back. You're leasing a town-owned space in exchange for services, which is essentially the services that you provide to the community on behalf of the town. Um, so in this case, if it's a standard lease agreement, that's actually good news because we don't have to go through town meeting. And you're still within the max thirty years, cause you're seeking twenty-five years. The only difference would be is that we are required under procurement law to put out an RFP. That's the only difference.
And who decides who, who would be the winner of that RFP?
The Select Board.
Okay.
Yeah, they would review, um, the RFPs and then they would decide who to award it to. Yes, yep. There's a, there's a formal process that's outlined in the RFP, so it tells you exactly what you have to submit. And when you submit it by, it's really at the town's discretion as to how long we leave that RFP open. So we don't have to leave it open for a month. You know, we could leave it open for a shorter amount of time, um, knowing that knowing that it's likely the Historical Society that's interested. Um, but we, in speaking with the attorney that I spoke with the second time, I asked him for clarification on that. And his advice was if the IGO's office told you, you need to do an RFP, then you need to do an RFP.
So a lease is out. It has to be an RFP?
No, so an RFP is simply what would allow you to occupy that space. So technically speaking, anybody could come forward and say, hey, we want to lease the Historical Society. The only thing we would change on the other end is we would change it from a grant agreement to a lease agreement. But the terms could all stay the same. It's just the type of agreement we'd be changing. And that's done at the Select Board level.
Okay. Okay, so we, we've applied. And you get four or five other applications. And some of them come up with, well, we'll pay you five thousand dollars a month for our lease. Who gets to decide? Who gets to say, nah, we don't want that five thousand dollars. We want the Historical Society to have it.
So that's actually part of the parameters that would be written into the RFP. So there would be inclusion about what the terms would be, whether or not the town would expect monetary funds in exchange for the lease agreement. It, it would, it can be very specifically written. But it's at the, the discretion of the Select Board. See, an RFP is a little bit different than like an invitation for bid. So with an invitation for bid, you technically are legally required to go with the lowest, most responsible bidder. With an RFP, they can base it on several different criteria. So it's really at the Select Board to say, we think that of the applicants, the, the Historical Society is the best fit for this building.
Well, I think we could guarantee that we would be the lowest bidder.
And that's fair.
That's what we, I, the couple of things that I wanted to accomplish here on this topic, we're just, like I said, bringing the Historical Society in so that we're on the same page with what the process is. Um, and then it, it sounds like, or I shouldn't say it sounds like, but, um, I'm assuming that the terms of the current grant agreement are acceptable and there's nothing major that you would be looking to change as far as those terms.
No, it wasn't the language, it's the terms.
It was just the term of it.
Yes.
Okay. So then the next step would really just be to get the feedback from the board on the willingness to, to proceed in this process of working for an RFP to, um, basically, we'd have to create a new lease agreement for the Historical Society going through this correct process. Um, and see if the board's agreeable to that. Are you agreeable to the requested twenty-five-year term? Are there any concerns?
I guess I just have questions as far as the process, because I feel like it's been back and forth a million different times that, um, every time it comes up, it's told, we're told that it's been done wrong. Um, and so I just would like to have actual, I think for the Historical Society as well as for town, because then this impacts the agreement with the fire station as well as, um, Marshfield and our other lease slash grant agreements. And so I just wanna formally understand, documented from legal, what the process, the, the correct process is, because I really think there are a lot of different pieces to it, that it could be what questions are asked and how they're answered. And I just, for clarification, wanna make sure. I'm not opposed to moving forward with it by any means, but I just wanna understand why every iteration of a town administrator or staff in the building has had different answers by the same phone number.
I agree. And that, that's one of the other things that I wanted to bring to the board was if, if you're agreeable with seeking out the, the correct process, I would like the board's, um, agreement or directive that we can seek out Town Council to ensure that we're following the correct processes. That's what we were guided to from the, um, Inspector General's office to do is to, but again, I, I wanted the board, the Select Board on board with seeking out council for the, their guidance on the process, so that we have it documented. So if it comes up again for Marshfield or comes up for anything else, that we have that process to reference.
Can I answer?
Go ahead, Harry.
I have a question here. Uh, currently it looks like the lease was originally done for three years on our, on our new lease to them.
Correct.
Where did they come up? What rationale did they use to go to twenty-five years on this property?
I can answer that. Um, we, two reasons. We have better chances of getting grants when we're plying and they know we're in the building longer than three years. And we have a substantial, um, depart, um, contribution, donation from someone who wants to see a longer lease before they give this large amount of money. And you know, um, just to add on, the last three years, historical, our funds, we've put twenty-eight thousand dollars into that building to include almost eight thousand dollars for a new furnace. So that, the fuel, um, security, it comes to, um, twenty-eight thousand dollars. So um, we are contributing. I know Tamika had said, um, you know, you're not giving us money, obviously, but in three years, we've given a lot of money. So we'd like to kinda know before we start spending thousands of more dollars that we're gonna be in there, we can get this big donation.
Your return on investment. You're investing, you want to see.
Right?
Did you agree with me, ladies?
Yes. I apologize. I didn't mean for it to come out that way, cause I know you guys have invested a lot.
But I have the numbers, so if anybody wants them.
I meant a lease payment, but I absolutely respect everything you guys have done. So I apologize.
Um, as a follow-up, would you consider a shorter timeframe?
Would you consider a shorter timeframe than twenty-five years?
Oh, tw- oh, not less than the three. You didn't mean that, Harry, right?
No, I, more than three, obviously. But twenty-five is a lifetime.
Well, we're not gonna be around anyways, but for the next generation, it was gonna take over.
How long is the Historical Society in there now? Since seventy-five?
I'm concerned about the next board, the next, I'm concerned about how the town's changing. So twenty-five seems to be a little bit long for me in the evolution of this town. And that's why I'm saying, would you consider something shorter? Three years, okay, I can understand. That's too short for what you wanna do. But to me, twenty-five is at the existential range of it.
I agree.
I, I know the town's gonna change, but our history is not gonna change. The history is gonna be the same. It, it would be like, like cutting off the Smithsonian for the, for the country. Our history that's in that building is not gonna change in twenty-five years. We're gonna add to it. But it's not, but what, what's there now is not gonna change.
I, I appreciate that comment. I'm not concerned about the history. The history is there. I'm concerned about the building, where it is, the process of what happens with this town going forward. And the lease on that particular building. So I, I'm saying, would eight to ten years be adaptable for you?
No.
No.
Okay, just so I know where I stand, or where you stand on this.
Why, why did the fire department get twenty-five years? What was the rationale in giving them twenty-five and not us who have all this history?
Oh, you mean the loan? Or, or on the fire department? Or you're talking?
No, no.
What about it?
Why do they have twenty-five years and they got less artifacts than we do?
I don't know that they do. And if they do, then I'll accept that. So I need to know who else out there has a twenty-five years. So I could do a comparison. And why we gave them the twenty-five years?
For the history of our town.
I, I'm not here to argue. I'm here to ask a question.
Okay, you know our opinion, Harry, and the board.
The, the request is still twenty-five years?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sure we can dig up the other agreements, just to see what the number of years, the term numbers are.
And the fire brigade is in their second twenty-five-year lease.
Their second twenty-five years. Okay. So to move forward, is, I guess, one, is the board agreeable to reaching out to Town Council to have documentation on the correct process that we need to move forward with a lease agreement? As the next step?
If the IGO's office said that that's what we need to do, shouldn't we just do that?
They, they recommended we reach out to Town, our Town Council, yeah. Um, so that to me would be our next step, just to make sure that we have the proper process. And then we can, um, continue the discussion on the, the term with the additional information, the other lease agreements. And hopefully it's just the RFP process and we don't have to go to town meeting and we can just go through the process.
I just have one more comment.
Sure.
That I would really love to go the easiest route to get our twenty-five years. But if this had to get to town meeting, I don't think we would have any trouble at all getting twenty-five years. So whatever, whatever, whatever works.
Okay. All right. So we'll, we'll keep that, all that information. So the next step, again, we'll reach out to Town Council to confirm the process. And then we'll, depending on that, we can work with the Historical Society on the next steps. And of course, keep the board updated with anything that we need to, to do for the next steps.
Jen, if I may, it probably won't be until a January meeting, cause they're working on a few things for us right now. So I really don't think we'll have something by our next meeting. Um, and then their first meeting in January is actually the special town meeting. So if you guys can just anticipate probably that second meeting in January.
But this coming January, you don't have to keep waiting years like we've been doing, right?
That's why we're starting this early before our lease.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I told you, I didn't forget about it. We just had.
We appreciate it, so.
Yeah, thank you very much.
So we'll, we'll make sure we keep on it and we'll be in touch and we'll, we'll continue the process to get where we
Thank you.
Come to an agreement for everybody. Okay. All right. So are we, everybody's comfortable on?
Yep. Yes. See you in the new year, right?
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you for coming. All right.
Thank you for your support. I, we appreciate your support.
Thank you.
We appreciate you.
Um, all right, next, um, item of business we have, special town meeting, which is to sign the warrant for the special town meeting, which is being held on January fifth, twenty twenty-six. Um, there are two versions in your packets that just wanted to, um, bring to the board. One, um, version two is the version that just notes that the articles are citizens petitions. Typically when we have citizens petitions for special town or any town meeting, um, they do have that designation and we don't provide any explanation outside of what the petitioner provides. Um, so I just wanted to bring both of these, um, to the board, just to see which ones you're comfortable signing, um, for us to post. And if there's any other questions on the warrant.
I think I normally am one that says not to include that, to not, if it's a citizen's petition, to only provide what the citizens petition, the petitioners submit. I wonder though, given that this is a call for a special town meeting from the petitioner and not, um, a, a warrant article on and existing, um, uh, warrant, like town meeting, if there is some benefit to providing some sort of explanation. But like I said, I know I'm normally the one that is like absolutely no, you know, just provided whatever is submitted from the petitioner.
This one, I think, is a little different too, because it's also street acceptance that we've previously had reviewed for prior town meetings. So there's not a lot that's been changed. Um, but again, from my perspective, I'm of the mind that it's the petitioner, in this case, it's as a citizen's petition, it should be up to the petitioner to provide explanations other than the motion that's been drawn up. I mean, they're the ones that are gonna get up at town meeting to provide the details and make the motion, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I, and like I said, my only, because it needs to follow the, the warrant kind of format. Yeah, I mean, I, and like I said, my only, because it needs to follow the, the warrant kind of format. Um, I've had already, I've had residents ask why there's a special town meeting and why it's that first day back to school after the holiday break, and why, 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 why?
Yep.
And, um, I don't, I mean, the explanation is very, is, it doesn't explicitly go into that either. Um, so it doesn't address the why the special meeting in a time. What, and why it's that date.
I don't think that really matters, but, I mean, the explanation is there to simplify what people are voting on for those who have trouble understanding things. I think leaving in an explanation makes perfect sense.
I guess I, I, I'm wishy-washy on it. I, you know, like I said, I don't think normally for the citizen petitions that we should have the explanation at all. Um, because it doesn't necessarily address the, the timing and everything, I think we can, to follow my logic, then I would not include it, just because that's consistently what we do. Harry, Paul, Alex, I think you said include it, cuz it makes it easier.
Um, yeah, I, 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 I don't know. I'm, I guess I'm kind of leaving that the board should provide some type of explanation as to why it's on the warrant, not the how come or this is, and what it says is, seems to be pretty succinct, because I know it's a citizen's petition, but it's up to the board to put it on the warrant. And since we did that, I think at least we owe the town some type of explanation.
I think we don't have any option. It has to be on the warrant. I mean, if, if it were at a meeting that was already declared and it came in with the requisite number of signatures, it would have to be placed, just as submitted, and we would not offer any explanation or commentary or anything. Um, this is above and beyond that, because the petitioner received enough signatures to not only get it on the warrant, but also call a special meeting to have it on the warrant. Um, and so, we, as a board, essentially, don't have any choice. We have to follow, um, MGL states that.
Yeah. Uh, Leah, when we put the special, uh, when we put a warrant for the special election for the marijuana place, did we offer an explanation on that one, why we were doing it?
That was, yeah, yes, because the select board called.
Right.
We, as a board, voted to call that as a meeting, because the appropriate process wasn't followed at the first time. So we, as a board, voted to call a special town meeting and to place that article. Um, and so we had discussion on the article and made the, and made the recommendation. Um, this, we, as a board, didn't have any option. They received, um, the petitioner was able to obtain enough signatures to call, to force town to hold a special town meeting. So, we don't, the board, it's essentially taken the board out of the equation.
Jen, if I may.
All right, so, o- okay. So let me ask you, if we decide not to, as a board, put an explanation there, then whatever the explanation is from the citizens, we have to accept. We can't correct it, we can't alter it, we can't do anything.
Well, that, that's the way it is with the, with the article, because it's there's no, I mean, this, like I said, this one's a little bit different, because we've already placed the street acceptance on previous ones. But typically, if it's a citizen's petition, that motion or that article does not go, undergo legal review. So there's no guarantee as to what it is.
All right, I was just curious as to whether or not we have any kind of oversight on the explanation, but what I'm hearing is we don't. So whatever explanation they gave us is what we have to print.
Correct. That's, that's typically what we've done for citizens petitions.
Okay. All right, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Just to clarify, um, the explanation that was put on one of the versions that you have was simply the one that was included on the original special town meeting warrant. That was not provided by the petitioners. We did look back, cuz we were questioning the same thing on that last special town meeting. That originally came to the town as a, uh, citizen's petition last fall, and there was no explanation. There was no recommendation made by any of the boards, um, or the finance committee.
So it was just the article text?
It was just the article as written by the petitioner, no legal review.
Right.
Um, and just the, the vote that was necessary.
That was necessary for it. Okay.
So, if, if, then maybe we should, whether we put it there or not, if we don't wanna put it there, then we should reach out to the petitioners to see if they wanna put an explanation on there.
Yeah, we.
No, it had to happen at the time of submission. You can't go back to them after the fact.
Did you hear that, Harry?
No.
Tamika said it's part of the submission of the petition. So I think all that we received, as far as the documentation, was the article itself. There wasn't an explanation attached to it. That's not to say that the petitioner can't get up at town meeting and provide an explanation. It's just there wouldn't be an ex, written explanation on the actual warrant.
Um, okay. Did, did the town notify them in that warrant, or no? We don't have any responsibility to say do you have a right to provide an explanation? Do you want to?
It's not the town's purview. It's not our responsibility.
From a legal perspective?
No.
I'm, I'm hearing no.
In fact, um, we did ask that question of town council, and he confirmed that there is no legal requirement on any warrant article to put an explanation.
Explanation?
Yeah, even ones that are, go through the normal process and are placed by the select board.
Okay.
There's no requirement for that.
Okay. Did you get that one, Harry?
I did. I did. Okay. Okay.
I, I agree.
So what, what, what is the decision of the board then to, to put one there, or no? I mean, I, uh, putting it for a vote, yes or no?
Uh, right. So my, my opinion is that we go with version two, which excludes the explanations and notes that the articles are via citizen's petition, which is the normal process that we usually do for citizen's petition articles. That's me.
All right, cuz the explanation doesn't really, all it does is highlight the warrant, if I'm not mistaken, correct? What the warrant says?
The explanation just summarizes what is being voted on.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I don't see as that's a major issue that.
Jen, if I may, um, we did set up a page on our website, um, specifically for the special town meeting, and it does explain how this time of meeting came to be, but it also goes through what is a street acceptance process? How does it happen? And it links to the street acceptance request for each of these three articles. So there is information available on the website in the same location where this warrant is going to be posted. So it is out there for the residents. That was something we had simply left up there from the prior town meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
Anybody else have a preference? Paul?
I'm fine.
Which one? Which version?
Two.
Include the explanations too, to exclude them? Just citizen's petition? Okay.
So I would make a motion to move and sign the warrant for, uh, as version two, excluding the explanations um, for the special town meeting on January fifth, um, twenty-twenty-six at six-thirty PM at New Quagmire Elementary School. Sign and post the warrants, so.
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second motion.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All right, roll call. Alex?
All right.
Wait a minute.
Matt's in there.
Harry?
Second eye.
Ledger eye. All right, so we're all set with that. And that will be posted to?
Uh, probably within the next few days. We have to schedule with the constable to get it posted, um, but we do have until December twenty-second to legally get it up there. But we'll do it as soon as we can.
Great. All right, um, the next item, we have, um, acceptance of an easement. This is the easement that was on Lindsay Lane, which was recently accepted at town meeting. Um, so the final step in this process is for the town to accept the easement. So we have that document um, that needs to be signed by the board and given to the developer to record with the Worcester District Registry of Deeds. Um, so this is really just a, a formality to formally accept that and sign that easement deed.
I move to accept and sign the easement for Lizley Lin- Lindsay Lane as approved at the special town meeting on November twentieth, twenty-twenty-five.
A motion, is there a second?
Second motion.
And a second. Any discussion, questions? All right, roll call. Alex?
All right.
Wait a minute.
Matt's in there.
Harry?
Second eye.
Ledger eye. Okay. And last but not least, we have, uh, license renewals. So this is, um, busy time for Tamika, end of twenty-twenty, uh, twenty-twenty-five. Um, looking to renew all licenses that we can by the end of the year. Uh, majority of businesses are all set to be, and they're, to have their licenses approved. Um, so we have the list in our packet. Um, hopefully, we can just approve these as a slate. All of these are all set, with the exception of the two noted on the bottom, right? Manz RV and Coffelands.
That's correct.
Um, but everybody else has gone through, uh, is this still the case? That we, we have some that are still awaiting the annual inspection?
Yes. So it's just a matter of scheduling, because they have to be inspected. Most of them have to be inspected by the building inspector. Um, they have to be inspected by the fire department, so it's just a very busy time of year for them.
Okay.
But for our purposes, they've submitted everything that they need to. Um, so by year end, their inspections should be complete, and I'll be able to issue them the document.
Okay, so we, we would just have the, the motion to approve pending the?
Correct. Yep, and then I'll just hold a physical document until, until their inspections are signed off in Viewpoint.
Okay.
And, sorry if I may, the, the two that have incomplete submissions, they're aware that, um, they need to be done by the end of the calendar year and
Yes, I.
The timing of everything, right? Just, I just wanna make sure. I mean, I know
Absolutely.
You usually have communication, but just for.
Yes, so, um, for one of them, I actually got the last piece of documentation I needed today. Um, and for the other one, that business provided the wrong documentation. They provided it for a different location of theirs. So I reached out to her today to ask her to get the one specific to the town of Rutland, and I did specifically state that December twenty-second is the last time we can get it done for this year. Um, but overall, I'm very grateful to our businesses. They were great in responding and providing what they needed, and I can't remember the last time we came to this point and only had a couple that were left outstanding. They really did a great job.
So if the board's amenable to doing them as a slate, I, we need two different ones, right, for the, um, cuz we have the ABCC.
Oh.
Yes.
So then, I would move to approve the twenty-twenty-six common vicular uh, auto dealer and liquor licenses as presented before us, and contingent on final approver, approvals for the required outstanding inspections.
Second.
Motion and second. Any other discussion on those? All right, roll call. Alex?
All right. Matt's in there. Second eye.
Ledger eye.
And then I would move to sign the twenty-twenty-six renewal certificate form for submission to the ABCC with, which documents the licensees who failed to renew their liquor licenses in twenty-twenty-six.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion on that?
If I may, just for clarification, that's businesses that have closed, that had outstanding liquor licenses. It's just to kind of clear the books, correct?
Correct, because.
Like, just more for the public.
Yeah, so it has to be, um, either non-renewed or actively turned over in order to free up a license. So at the end of this fiscal year, excuse me, the end of the calendar year, um, once the ABCC is notified, those licenses will be null and void, and then will free up in the quota. Um, one of them is for a closed business, and the other one, um, is gonna be voluntarily surrendered by the other business.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second for that. Um, any other discussion, questions? All right, roll call. Alex?
All right.
Wait a minute.
Matt's in there. Second eye.
And ledger eye.
If I may, I, Jen, I have a question.
Sure.
Um, this is, I, we, there is still capacity for, um, businesses to have a on-premise consumption license, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, cuz that was a question that I had been asked by, and I believed that there had been, but I didn't wanna answer. Um, it's the retail sales that is, we are at max for all alcohol, at retail sales, right?
Correct, for off-premise, yep, all alcohol. And now, um, with the expiration of these, or the non-renewal of these two licenses, it will free up two more on-premise retail for all alcohol. Yep.
Thank you. All right, are there any future agenda requests from the board?
None for me.
I did have one. Um, Seth had brought up earlier, the departments have submitted their budgets. He's just making some waiting on, on some information for some final revisions. I wanted to get the board's, um, thought on an agenda to discuss those initial budgets. Um, obviously, with December twenty-second is the public hearings for the street acceptance, so I anticipate that will be a rather full meeting. Um, with that, in addition to a couple of regular business items, and then we have the special town meeting on January fifth, which is also a regular meeting night. So I wanted to see if the board would like to schedule an off-meeting to just go through some of those initial budgets, or if you want, were okay holding that until the January twentieth regular meeting, or if that, you felt that was too late to start those discuss, we, we'll, we'll certainly have the budgets available for review in advance of that. We can even send that as, as soon as Seth has, you know, got everything that he needs, but just as far as a board discussion, um, as well as any, you know, um, extending the invitation to finance committee as well, to kind of have a joint discussion.
I mean, for me personally, as much as I hate having an off-meeting night, I think we owe it to the departments, to our department heads, our staff, as well as our townspeople, to really put the time in to understand it, um, how, what these requests are and what it's going to look like, um, in May. And so I think we would be better of a fresh mindset if we could all come at it, find an off meeting night where we can all come in and know that that's the sole agenda, and we're not looking at a clock, thinking, oh, my gosh, here it is, nine or ten o'clock, and we're, have a million numbers running through our head, where if we can dedicate this. Um, I think we owe it to our residents, as well as our department heads, to do that.
Isn't that the point of when we meet with each department, though?
Th- this would be an opportunity for the town administrator, at that point, it would be Heather. I would obviously come with her to present the initial, this is where we, you know, a broader overview. And then, so you guys can, you know, read the document, understand how the document's laid out, answer any, you know, preliminary questions on that, and then we, from there, we go and start meeting with the individual departments at that point.
Yeah.
But at least gives you the overall picture as a whole of where we're at.
And if, if I may, I think whether we are doing an override or not, and beginning that conversation, I mean, Holden has already begun all of their press and, um, publicity, that they're looking, that they're looking at an override, and what that number is looking like and why. And so if the numbers show, um, what that is, then I think that that would be a better opportunity at that point.
Start educating.
Right, yeah.
I don't know, I if we're planning on talking to the individual departments about the budgets and having them go through with us, I don't think dedicating an entire night to the top line of the budget is necessarily gonna add a lot of value. I think that a presentation of the budget from the town administrator and Seth helping, um, would be sufficient in a summary manner. And I, I mean, I kind of think at that point, it's a public document, so it becomes public. Um, and I think it's on us to look through it at that point and start com- composing questions for the departments when we had those meetings. But for us to start picking it apart or talking about it and like bringing things up to, I mean, what are we, what are we, what are we pushing back on? What are we pointing out? Um, you know, if it's, it's a, if it's a quick, you know, fifteen-minute conversation about, you know, the summary of where we're at, um, it's pretty clear the direction that we'll have to head, whether it're override and what that number is, whether we go really in-depth on it or not. So I'm not sure that we gain a lot of value by really going in-depth on it at this point before the department meetings.
Yeah, I, I, I kind of, I, I, I kind of agree with Alex. A Cliff Notes version from the town administrator of this department went to five percent increase, this one went seven. Now list, and then here's the overall increase for the town of seven, eight percent. To get into nitpick at this point without really understanding the overall picture, I think, would be um, immature or in, in, improper at this point in time
Yeah.
uh, to try to tell the departments what to do. I think a Cliff Notes would still give us.
Harry, what I'll do is I'll do is a summary document of the entire, entire budget, and when I push it out to the select board and finance committee, you'll have that document. you'll have that document, uh, in front of you while you're reviewing it on your own. That, would that work for you?
Yeah, that'd work for me.
Okay.
Yep.
Are you okay with that, Paul?
That's fine.
Um, I, I do kind of agree with Leah, I think it would be good to, to have some initial discussion. Um, again, just for some transparency and allowing public to see what numbers are coming in. Um, but if it sounds like the majority of the board would rather just review that and start those discussions at the budget hearings, I think that's.
I, I don't think I'm saying that, I don't think it's good to have a, a quick conversation to see where we are summary-wise, I'm thinking, I'm just, I think my point is that I don't think that's a separate night, multi-hour conversation.
Okay.
I think that's a fifteen-minute, you know, here's where we're at, public now knows, you know, we've, we're, we're aware, public is now aware. I mean, us talking about that for two hours is not gonna have a major impact on that.
Um, according to the budget schedule, we start meeting with departments, uh, individually on the twenty first of January, so.
Right.
Oh, we went that late?
Yeah.
I thought we brought it back to December, did we adjust that again, then?
It was February, we brought it back to January.
Yeah.
I thought we talked about bringing it to December.
I mean, we can move it up to the nineteenth of January.
I, I think we decided to hold off because of the holidays. And actually, it would be the twentieth, cause that Monday's a holiday.
Holiday, yeah.
Yeah. Sure. Right, cause the twentieth is the Tuesday after the holiday.
Yeah.
Um, I will say that there's probably at least three to four agenda items for that night that we're holding, because we can't get to them on January fifth. Um, so just to, just to keep that in mind.
For January twentieth?
Yeah, the, the agenda will probably have a decent amount of stuff.
And that's my other concern, is if we put an agenda item on and we just say, you know, it, summary, high-level summary of the submitted, it's not gonna take fifteen minutes, it never takes fifteen minutes. There's always, it's always gonna be a bigger, longer conversation, so, I just, for me, I would just like to prepare for there to be some discussion and not limit it to fifteen minutes, so it, i- if, like I say, if the board is not agreeable to having a separate, again, that's fine with me. Um, if everybody's just wants to do their review and be prepared to ask their questions, starting at the budget hearings, that's.
When are we, I'm sorry, um, when are we planning to put this on the, when are we planning to put it on the agenda? What agenda?
We, well, that's what we're talking about, we wouldn't unless, until the budget hearings start on January twenty first.
Well, we would have something on the agenda to.
That's why, that's why I'm asking, cause I, it's, it's gonna be a little bit of a longer conversation, that unless we want to be here until ten o'clock on some of the existing.
Uh, s- so.
Standard meeting nights.
I guess I, I'm, okay, so, so you're saying we wouldn't put it on a regular agenda at all until?
Budget hearings.
I think essentially, sorry, I think essentially, we don't have a regular schedule, the, it won't be complete by December twenty second, which is our next regular scheduled meeting. Our meeting after that is January fifth, which is a special town meeting night, so we're trying to hold as much business as possible from happening before that meeting, so we don't have a full select board meeting before or after a special town meeting.
Right.
And then the meeting after that is the twenty-whatever meeting, and that's when budget hearings are slated to start. So is there an opportunity from the fifth to the twenty-whatever to have a conversation about the budget, I think is where we're.
And it, and it could be a joint meeting, say, January eighth, the Thursday night with the finance committee.
Committee.
And, you know, just keep it to an hour, hour and a half, and.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I think that would be a good idea. I want, I don't want it before the town admini, the new town administration.
Correct, I agree.
Yep.
I agree.
You know?
Yep.
When is, is that, January eighth, is that a regular FinCom meeting? Do they even have one?
They haven't booked out that far, but it's, it's a regular, like, meeting night for them, they usually meet on a Thursday night every couple of weeks.
Okay.
Um, and Heather will have started that Monday.
Okay, how about, is, is the board agreeable to reaching out to see if FinCom would be amenable to a joint topic? And we can joint post, and if people, if the board can come, please come and you can ask questions. Otherwise, if we don't have a quorum, we just won't convene the meeting and I'm sure FinCom's gonna wanna talk about it anyways, even if select board does not.
Yep.
Is the board amenable to that?
Yeah, if, if FinCom's agreeable to that.
Okay.
Does that sound agreeable to you? Okay.
Okay, perfect.
Alright, so we'll look at that, um, and, let's see, and we have the February R D I C um, piece. Um.
I did send emails to Seth and Tamika.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Very helpful.
Alright, I think that's everything I have for right now, I think the next couple of our meetings are gonna be pretty busy, so, does anybody have anything else? Um.
Nope.
Alright, other, just to reiterate, December twenty second is, um, a short regular meeting, or, or regular meeting plus the public hearings for the street acceptance requests. Um, January fifth is the short regular meeting with the special town meeting at Nequag. Um, so we're gonna have our, hold our regular meeting at six o'clock and then move into the special town meeting at six thirty. Um, and then January twentieth is regular meeting, but that's the Tuesday following the Martin Luther King Junior holiday, so just be aware of that. Anything else to come before the board this evening? Alright, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, roll call, Alex?
Oh, I.
Wait a minute.
Matt's in there. Second eye.
And ledger eye. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you, Harry.
Bye.